We'll now call this special workshop meeting the council to order. You have a copy of the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting, and I would entertain a motion at this time to adopt the agenda.
Looks to adopt the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor signify the same.
I take it Mr. Willingham's not going to be here this evening?
We haven't heard anything. Dr. Winterfell, we'll turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council. Let's do that a third time. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. In the past, we've received the auditors' report in a normal, full session of City Council. Several of you have mentioned that that setting was not really conducive to a good dialogue. So this evening, we've asked the auditors to come in a workshop setting so the auditors can review with you their findings for the fiscal year which ended June 30, 2016, and we hope through this setting that you feel more comfortable in asking questions and having a dialogue. After the auditors have provided their report, Gail Major, Finance Director, is going to walk us through a series of items relative to our preparation of next year's budget, and then we will have an update on the capital improvement program for this year. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Gail so she can introduce the auditing staff. Gail?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have with us tonight Andrew Brothers and Linda Murphy from, is it McLeodry now? Just McLeodry?
RSM now.
RSM, sorry. They change their name every so often to give you their report on the audit. Andrew's going to speak, I believe.
Okay, well, first of all, we'd like to thank the board and management here at the City of Jacksonville for letting us be of service again this year, and we'd also like to thank all the city departments for their assistance during the audit. Everyone was very cooperative. I'll start right here, I've got some slides. Everybody should have received a copy of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFR, for the year ending June 30, 2016, and here are your five areas that are within any CAFR, your large areas. First is the Management Discussion and Analysis, and that basically provides you a synopsis of the year. That would be in the second tab of the CAFR, the financial section. And then you go on, you've got your government-wide financials, and that is your full accrual financials, and that breaks out between governmental activities and business-type activities like your utilities. This would be in your basic financial statements tab. And then you go on, you've got your fund financials, and that would be like your general fund, your capital projects, water and sewer funds, solid waste, stormwater. Main item you guys are most concerned with would be what you operate under, which is the general fund, and that's driven by your property tax revenue. And then you go on further, you've got your notes to the financial statement, which basically just provides a more detailed look to those financial statement accounts and provides more backup support for what's going on with each account. And then you've got your required supplementary information, and this mainly deals with the pension information that's just required to be disclosed. So these are the type of opinions that an audit team like City of Jacksonville can receive when an audit is conducted. You've got a qualified opinion. It'd be a situation like, we may not agree with a certain matter in the financial statements and whether it was handled materially correct, thus causing an exception of us being able to issue a cleaner, unmodified opinion. And then you could have an adverse opinion, which would basically say the overall financial statements are materially incorrect. And then next would be a disclaimer. That would be where we couldn't render an opinion because, say, we're missing information or we couldn't perform specific auditing procedures. And then you've got your unmodified, clean opinion. This is the highest level of assurance you can receive, and that's what the City of Jacksonville received this year. This is what your state of North Carolina, your bonding agencies, regulatory agency, this is what they want to see, an unmodified opinion, and that's what the city received this year. I did want to mention, within the opinion, there was an emphasis of a matter, nothing dealing with an error or deficiency. It was strictly related to a Governmental Accounting Standards Board that came out during the year, Gatsby '73, where the city had to reclassify assets in the fund that was formerly reported as the Law Enforcement Officer Special Separation Allowance Trust Fund, and these assets were reclassified into the general fund. As a result, beginning net position of the governmental activities in the general fund increased by 305,000. Gatsby basically said this fund didn't meet the definition of a trust, and that's all that's going on here, no error, just a reclass because of Governmental Accounting Standards Board, a new pronouncement they came out with.
So they put it in the general fund, and they were uncomfortable with that, if that's the right term. What did they want us to do? Did they want us to leave it in the general fund?
It's in the general fund currently. They were uncomfortable with it separate-
With it separate.
-as a, in the less a trust.
Okay.
We were showing it as a trust fund, and most of the governments in North Carolina handled it that way, I think.
Yes, correct.
But we'd never adopted a specific trust ordinance that said those assets are protected from creditors, so we had to move it back to the general fund.
And you're comfortable with that being in that location?
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
Is there a need to put it into trust by putting out a trust ordinance or anything? I mean, it's-
We certainly could do that. I think right now, we're showing it as a restricted fund balance or-
Yeah, restricted.
Some kind of restricted one, because that's what it's set aside for.
See, right now, it's considered to be committed.
There you go.
Restricted and committed, okay. So now, we're going to move along to the financial results for the year. As you can see, this is pie chart of the general fund revenues for the year. As you can see, your property taxes make up more than half of your revenues. Other taxes, that would be, that's 26 percent, that would be like your sales tax in the green, and then in the dark green, that would be your unrestricted intergovernmental, that would be like your utility franchise tax and your beer and wine tax, and then your restricted intergovernmental, 5.8 percent, that would be like your grants. Another-
That's a high percentage for ad valorem. I recall it usually been in the 40s. Is that because of the county switching over to the sales tax formula?
Yes, sir. Yes.
And that's raising the rates, probably.
Right.
Well, yeah. Mr. Thomas is right on point. It was a double hit in that when you lost that from the sales tax, it not only took the sales tax percent down, but to make it up, we had to raise the property tax 10 cents, and that shot it way up. So it was, you know, it's a two for it, you can look at it financially.
But as you can see, just another breakdown of the general fund revenues by source. Ad valorem taxes have been steady through '14 and '15 as a percentage of total revenues, as well as the other revenue sources. So the consistency's there from '14, '15, '16. And then this is a comparable tax rates chart for the year ended June 30, 2016. You've got Jacksonville at 64.2, and then similar size, that would be seven cities with similar population, and that's information that comes from Department of Treasury, state and local government, and Finance Division, North Carolina. And so, you know, you can see your tax rates up from similar size, and then statewide, And then here is a percent of current year property tax levy collected. As you can see, Jacksonville sits in at almost 98 percent. So that's indicative of Property Tax Department doing a good job on collecting the property tax that's been levied.
Would you say that the, any home that has gone into foreclosure, those taxes are still due, they weren't collected, so as foreclosures work their way through, do you see that any money outstanding from this year relative to that would be collected? Do you understand the question I'm asking?
Yes.
If the, we have seen over the last two or three years that the number of foreclosures in the city has increased, so I'm assuming that some of what we did not collect is obviously available to eventually be paid if the foreclosure is cleared.
I'm wondering if the banks don't go ahead and pay, or they own, if they take the property back, they still owe the taxes, and I think they would pay it.
Do we have specific measures we take to collect?
Actually, the county-
Right.
And do they, I mean, what do they do?
Well, let me give you an example. Tomorrow morning on the courthouse step, there is a lot that is generally over in the area, you know, behind Kentucky Fried Chicken, where a house will, or a lot will be sold. It has a tax value of $20,000 plus or minus, and there will be a tax sale of that property. Both the city and the county are owed several thousand dollars in property taxes. City Attorney and I have talked about that, and we hope through the sale of that property that community development is currently looking at that as a good location for some homes community development could buy it. If they do, whoever the successful bidder is, would then have to pay the taxes, so.
So really, besides the foreclosure, or what they publish in the newspaper, that's all the effort they make, I guess.
I can't speak to what they do.
Just curious why the percentage went up significantly from 12 and 13. It is-
Well, I think some of that probably has to do with the tax and tags being collected at the LPA.
Oh, property tax, not just real estate, but property.
You're right.
And they don't consider it levied on the vehicle until you pay it, so it's 100 percent. Where it used to not be 100 percent.
That's right.
Gotcha.
So it is driving that, all the total up.
Thank you.
Just kind of give you another demonstration of dealing with property taxes levied during the year, comparing same, came from that same information I got from the Department of State Treasury. You've got similar size, you know, Jacksonville's sitting at 98 percent, similar size, large cities, 99 percent, statewide, 98. So, I mean, Jacksonville's right in line with everybody else as far as what they're collecting in the current year. And this is just a pie chart showing the general fund expenditures by major area. You can see public safety is about 50 percent of expenditures, general government, 11 percent, debt service, 13 percent, capital outlay, 4 percent, cultural and recreational, 11 percent, and public works, 13 percent. And similar, just to, you know, kind of show you the consistency with '14 and '15, you can see that expenditures have been consistent over the years in those areas. And here is an illustration of your general fund balance, like your retained earnings, and you can see the growth from 12 to 13, went down a little bit in '14, then back up '15 and '16. Here is a more detailed breakdown of the general fund balance. As you can see, within restricted stabilization by state statutes, close to 5.3 million unassigned would be 13, roughly 13.5 million.
Percentage-wise, what is the fund balance?
I think he's got it-
50-some percent.
He's got a slide, I think.
Yep. I'm about to get there. So-
Go back one for just a second. Explain to the public what the category stabilization by state statute actually means, please.
And to the City Council again.
That is required by the Local Government Commission, and it is basically the receivables less certain deferred revenues, plus some, maybe some restricted cash, and these are monies that the LGC considers to be like a cushion, that you're not going to, that you are not going to commit to spending. Do you have anything to add to it, Gail?
So what it does is, it basically forces a minimum balance on your general funds. So it's so that you're required to hold funds, and those are restricted, meaning that obviously we can't, they're not obligated?
They're not obligated for you to spend in the next year.
Okay. So it really is a minimum balance to it.
I think the important, from a budgetary standpoint, the line item here that is the most important is the one towards the bottom that you'll see is identified as unassigned. That's what we would, in a private account, that's basically your liquid savings account that you could spend. So when you talk about the fund balance being a percent of the total budget, you can look at either the bottom number, which has a lot of restrictions on it, or you can look at the number which is the unassigned number, so.
The LGC looks at that percentage of that unassigned to your operating budget, correct?
Well, they actually look at all of it. When you look for a, let's say that we were going to go out and borrow money like we did several years ago for the Center for Public Safety, the fire station in Sturgeon City. They're going to look at all of that. The number that they especially look at is the unassigned and how you have done over the years with that unassigned. The LGC is no different than most banks. They don't want to loan you money unless you really don't need it. So they really want to make sure that you have plenty of unassigned cash.
But the 8 percent that we, that number that we've always looked at as being our minimal fund balance, that, of course, we raised it to 10 percent.
I was going to say, I think historically, we've looked at what your goal was, 20 percent.
Is that the unassigned number?
I think we raised the minimum to eight, but we always-
The state law is the minimum. The state law, right. The state law is 10 percent now.
But we internally raised our minimum to 10.
And in discussing it with the Local Government Commission, they do look at that 8 percent, but they're more concerned with, did you have 50 and it went to 20? They're going to call you and say, what happened?
And plus, I think if you go below the 8 percent, you're probably going to get a letter from them.
Oh, yeah.
So here's another illustration, fund balance unassigned as a percentage of the general fund expenditures, and as you can see, Jacksonville's sitting at 35 percent. We're a similar size, similar size, there's seven cities we discussed earlier, a similar size there around 34 percent, and then statewide, it's 46, keeping in mind statewide sorts of background, all of your smaller municipalities, which typically have a percentage unassigned higher, just because typically the smaller municipalities have more risk, you know, if something were to go wrong, they've got to be ready to make a move and go into that reserve. And then you can see, going back to here, I mean, you know, the city's got a lot of pieces to it as far as non-spendable, restricted, committed, subsequent year expenditures assigned.
And this percentage is going to be a little bit different than what you see later because we're comparing here to the FY '16 actual expenditures. Usually, when we talk about it for budget purposes, we look at it as a percentage of the budget for the next year, how much of that budget we could cover.
This is actual.
So this is a little bit different than what-
Okay, I've got a couple more items. Next, I'd like to discuss the compliance section of the report, and this is the last tab of the report. First opinion starts on page 83.
283.
283, I'm sorry. So as well as the financial statement audit, we also come in and do an opinion on the internal controls of our financial reporting, as well as compliance. We didn't have any instances of material weaknesses in internal control. However, we did have a significant deficiency in internal control over financial reporting and a significant deficiency in internal control over major federal programs with a related compliance findings, finding. You can find this at page 292. I don't have a slide for this. And the first one, finding 2016, 001, overstating of debt. The city recorded some debt prior to actually receiving the funds, kind of like what you would do if you've got a sale and a receivable, but the funds were put on, or the loan was put on the books as debt when it shouldn't have been put on until the funds were actually received. An audit adjustment was made or proposed, city agreed with it, we got that issue fixed, we put a recommendation in place, year-end procedure put in place to reconcile the debt with third-party source documents going forward. The city agreed with this, and they've already implemented this, this new procedure, so that we don't get in a situation where debt's overstated. It wasn't a large amount, but because of the fund it was related to, it was above our level of going from controlled deficiency to significant deficiency. And anytime you've got a significant efficiency, it's got to go in the CAFR versus our SAS 114 letter. So that was the first issue. The second issue dealt with community development block grant. Here, we had a situation with subrecipient monitoring. Incident was identified during testing where the subrecipient entered into a contract, and it was unclear to us whether the bid process was followed correctly and the contract was awarded on a fair and open competition basis. So the fact was, process transparency as to fair and open competition was not readily determinable by us. We have-
Was there a process that wasn't followed, or can you be a little more clear on that?
Well, the written agreement stated, and I probably should have gone back, if you look in the criteria, per the, what we follow, the OMB compliance supplement, before dispersing any CDVG funds to a subrecipient, the recipient shall sign a written agreement with the subrecipient. This agreement shall include a provision concerning the statement of work, records, reports, program income, and uniform administrative requirements. And then you go on to the subrecipient agreement that the city has currently in place, and that reads as follows. "The subrecipient shall undertake to ensure that all contracts in the performance of this agreement shall be awarded on a fair and open competition basis."
But you didn't have any record of that?
We didn't have any record.
And Richard, is that just?
Don't know the details. What we will do, though, is we will look at both of these and provide you specifics as to the circumstances, the amount of money, and exactly what happened, and we'll try to have that to you by tomorrow.
Could you just define subrecipient to me? That's kind of, I understand recipient.
Okay, so-
Where the initial recipient?
Well, yeah, let me explain it if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
The city is the recipient of the CDVG funds from the federal government. When we then disperse those to someone to have a house rehabbed, they become the subrecipient.
It's not like a sub-sub-contract or anything like that.
Well, and I think generally, we pay the bills when we're rehabbing a house, but it's like the nonprofits that we give money to, and they are a subrecipient, because we give them the money and allow them to disperse it.
So we are the recipient.
So we have to monitor them.
Correct.
So basically, it was an inadequate subrecipient monitoring by the city to ensure that this specific recipient was following the subrecipient agreement, and it was fair and open competition. We've recommended, if you go to page 293, recommend the city strengthen its controls around subrecipient monitor to ensure recipients are performing bid process appropriately per the subrecipient agreement. In addition, we recommend the city clarify within its subrecipient agreements what constitutes fair and open competition. Management's corrective action plans on page 294 related to this one, it's the bottom one. And the city agrees with the recommendation and will comply, and they will implement this at the end of the month, so procedures will be put in place. So those were the two issues with compliance. Next, I just want to go, one more thing, the SAS 114 letter. Each of you should have received that.
Hang up just a second. What's the, the management's response? City will advise the subrecipient agreement to clarify the definition of fair and open competition. Seems pretty clear on its surface. How are you going to clarify it?
I'm going to write it into the contract so that the person understands what that term actually means, meaning that if they're going to spend the money a certain way, they have to get competitive bids. Lily, you want to join us and add, why don't you come up and sit next to Councilmember Bittner, if you would?
You are correct. We had an incident where one of our organizations-
A subrecipient.
A subrecipient. Secured the services of a contractor but didn't do it in a way that we could say it was fair and open.
Those guidelines are predetermined by CDVG guidelines. That's already predetermined, so we don't have to redevelop that.
Well, it was in the contract before-
It's in the contract, it's always been in the contract. They just didn't realize what steps they had to take. And so we've put even stronger language in the contract, it's already been modified, and we're working with them now to train them on what it means to get bids and how they should go through their bid process.
Okay. Thank you.
So then each of you should have received the SAS 114 letter. And this is kind of like, we like to refer to it as our report card, and within it- And within it, we address that there was no disagreements with management, no significant findings, no major difficulties with the audit. Also includes a table in here that shows the adjusted journal entries that were proposed and made. Also within it would be the accounting estimates during the audit. And then there's also the communication between us and management related. There were some controlled deficiencies, very immaterial, that just controlled deficiencies didn't arise to the significant deficiency level. And also, we've got the management representation of the management, well, the letter that management signs that addresses the potential issues that we could run into. And management acknowledges that they've given us everything in the audit and they take responsibility of certain items. So that's kind of where we stand. Any questions?
I'd just like maybe there's a follow-up, the seven cities.
The seven cities?
I mean, you can, you don't have to tell me right now, but I'm just eventually...
I thought I, I had it on my desk, but I left it.
Well, I need it written down.
I can do that.
I'll probably just email that to me tomorrow. I'll get it after.
Okay.
One of the things that, as you will look at the seven cities, one of the things that tax rate is directly related to is tax value. I have already looked at the, at the numbers. What we know is that a police car costs the same whether you're in Cary, North Carolina, or Jacksonville. A garbage truck costs the same. It doesn't pick up any more garbage there than it does here. The difficulty, if you will think back on probably four or five years ago, we gave you information that showed all the single-family homes in the city and how many of them fell below 50,000 tax value, 100,000 tax value, and so forth. The challenge that you face and that we face as a city government is we are not a wealthy community. We are, as, if you pardon the bluntness, as middle-class as they come. That's a great thing. But it also means that when we have to buy garbage trucks, police cars, fire trucks, build buildings, we are charging that at a higher tax rate to our citizens, simply because we're not wealthy. So when you look at the seven, it would be also interesting if the staff could take a moment not only to provide you with the seven, but also provide you with a little bit of socioeconomic profile of each of those communities. Because if the seven compares you to Cary, North Carolina, if the seven compares you to Jones County, sorry about that, Gail, you know, but perspective is something we all need to have. So if it's acceptable, council will not only provide, the staff will not only provide the mayor and council with the list of seven, but also a little socioeconomic profile.
It'd be interesting to know what the average price, for example, is and really the split between commercial and residential and the tax values, too.
We will see what we can get on that. One question that I always ask, the auditor is hired by you. The auditor is reporting to you. So the question that I always ask the auditor is this. Did anyone, my office, anyone in the finance department, anyone on the city staff in any way try to influence, modify, encourage you to change any of your findings?
No, sir.
Did you have full cooperation from the city staff?
Full cooperation.
Are there any recommendations that you would make to the council on how we operate the auditing process beyond those that you've already explained?
I can't think of any. How about you, Lynn?
I can't think of any.
Okay. Counsel, I'll turn it back to you for comments.
Counsel, any comments or questions the auditors probably have from here?
Just one last question. Remind us why this took a little bit longer this year?
Why this took a little bit longer? We had, there were some issues. Jacksonville had more of a complex issue this year with the debt refunding that occurred. That took a little more time on this RN and Jacksonville's end, but that's, that's what it came down to.
Well, that was a good thing for us, so.
Yeah, it was.
We can put up with that.
Thank you, sir.
Definitely create savings. So like Dr. Woodruff said, you know, we're at the board's discretion. You know, you guys have any questions that may arise after the meeting? Gail has our contact info, and please reach out to us.
Is there a certain department this year that was single-dive for a more intensive study?
Not from a, not like, say, we randomly said, okay, we're going to look at this one. We had to test CDVG this year just because of the increased spending related to that department this year. Typically, each year we have to test Powell Bill because of the thresholds. And then the last several years, we had to test federal transit. Well, this happened this year. CDVG was up high enough to where we could meet our requirements by testing Powell Bill and CDVG versus Powell Bill and FTA and CDVG. So if that makes sense.
So the in-depth evaluation was community development block grant? Is that what you're saying?
That, and I mean, that was, that got tested and Powell Bill got tested this year.
See, if it's over 750,000 and we haven't tested it within three years, we have to test it.
I don't think we had tested CDVG since '09, maybe, near 2000.
Drug fund is part of your audit, too?
It's included in there, but the threshold is usually so small. Drug fund?
See, now, they've changed the requirements in the last year that is now, it used to be 500,000 and now it's 750,000 for a single audit.
So drug fund doesn't come close?
Sir, would you like information on the drug fund?
Not necessarily.
What we will do is we'll make sure that as we get into the budget, that we provide you all with the information that shows the historic balance of it.
I mean, the internal procedures for handling and dispersing it are still intact?
Actually, they've changed a little bit probably since you were familiar with it. They no longer...
Well, then I would like to know.
They don't have a separate bank account anymore. It's, it's part of...
But do you do an internal audit of their accounts?
Well, not so to speak.
When did we stop doing that?
They, they have petty cash that we replenish now and again, but they don't have a separate account. It's all part of our account, and it goes through the same approval processes. You know, used to, they had a checkbook.
Right.
And they wrote the check and they brought it over here and the finance director had to sign it. That doesn't happen anymore.
Okay. So how do they do their transactions as far as if they buy some, for instance?
They just go through the same processes before. They just have the petty cash on hand and we replenish that.
Or open a requisition and charge them.
Well, yes, they're buying something.
Say like if they want to go buy like a Bearcat or something like that.
Yes, that has to come to council and you approve that. And then we make them put in a requisition.
Don't speak of any things specifically.
And get some quotes and stuff like that.
Any other questions of the auditors?
Thank you very much. That's a very thorough, thorough look at it.
I do want to stress again, they are your auditors. We'll be very happy to email you. We will go ahead and email you their email address and telephone numbers and the names. We would encourage you to feel free to contact them directly.
How long have you been doing the audits for the city now? How many years consecutive?
I don't know. I've probably been on it five years, but how many years consecutively?
I think it's closing in on 20 because they were the auditors when I came here. Not the same people.
No, not the same people.
Andrew's not old enough to have been here 20 years.
We have different partners also.
We do have...
That change partners.
Partner rotations and levels that come into play over top of partner that come in and do like quality reviews. So we've got multiple eyes looking at it that may not have looked at it one year, but they're going to look at it the next year.
Another thing, when it comes to the, when it comes to the auditor, if you will recall, probably five years ago, we discussed the opportunity to go out and get proposals for auditors. What we have found is that this has become governmental auditing is now such a specialty that while there are many auditing firms who may be available for private sector auditors, auditing, there are not that many auditors available for public sector auditing. So we have discussed that with you in the past. Do you, Gail, do you and the auditors want to comment on that at all?
I think we did go out for proposals three years ago now, wasn't it? And...
Yes.
What was it, a five-year contract or something?
I think it was one year with four one-year options.
Correct.
So we're, yeah, I think two more years, maybe.
Okay.
And that is correct, that due to the amount of training that we now have to have, that a lot of smaller CPA firms do not do it anymore. Because we had to have a number of hours just for governmental and compliance auditing.
Any other questions of our auditors? All right, at this time of, does anybody want to make a motion to accept the audit as presented? Move to accept the fiscal year audit, 2015, 16?
Sir.
Any discussion, further discussion? Here, not all in favor? Speaker obviously an aye. All opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you want to stay for yours?
Not unless you want to.
Couldn't be educated. They may need some moral support.
I might.
She, she knows where to find them. Thank you very much.
Richard, we'll take a recess for a few minutes and we'll reconvene.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're going to go back in session now.
Thank you. Each year, we begin the preparation of the coming year's budget in November. And it's traditional that in January, we bring to y'all an overview of the assumptions, where we think the revenues are going to be, and we'd like your input and the discussion. Part of this will also show you the schedule. As you know, the budget must be adopted by June 30th of each year. I'm going to ask Gail Mays, finance director, to give you an update on our current finances. You'll find a lot of this is in step with what you just saw with the audit. While the audit had to do with our expenditures and revenues through June 30th of 16, what she's going to be talking with you about is information that updates that for the current fiscal year. So, Gail?
Thank you, sir. We're going to start out with the funds in particular because I think the auditor gave you a pretty good overview of the city as a whole. Here is the slide you're used to seeing of the unassigned fund balance and how it's changed. And here's where the percentages are different that I mentioned. He had a little bit different percentage. Our percentage here is of the next year's budget. So like FY16, the 13 and a half million is 30% of next year's budget. And for the general fund, this is just a recap of FY16, the budget compared to the actual and the variance. As you can see, the revenues came in above what the budget was just a little bit. When you look at the total, it says it was 98%. Well, that's because of that three and a half million appropriated fund balance that we didn't use. So it looks like it came in a little bit under the total, but it's actually over the total in actual revenues. And the expenditures were 3.8 million less than budget. So we came out to the good there.
And I would like to, you know, every year, we balance our budget using the appropriated fund balance. And every year, you know, we, we hope that we will find ourselves in a position like this. But I, I would have to please take a moment to thank all of the city employees. We are not in an agency that believes if you got it, spend every penny of it. We stress, we're going to give you honest budgets, but we don't want you to spend it unless you absolutely need to spend it. And that's why, again, if you look in FY16, we budgeted spending out of our savings account, $3.5 million. And at the end of the year, we did not spend it.
And about a half a million dollars of our savings came from fuel, and we all know that that's not given every year. Some more information a little later on what we're going to project, but that was almost a half a million dollars in general fund of the savings. And then the next slide in the group is going to show you FY16, this is December year-to-date compared to FY17, year-to-date, December, and then the budget for FY17. As you can see, the avalanche taxes were at 80%. That's pretty common because we should have received most of the money by January. I think we're going to end up about 23, maybe, and we're really real close to the budget. Sales tax, we're at 28%. That's about where we'd expect to be because we only get, it lags three months, so that's only three months of revenue. So we're about 3% above. And I think that trend's going to probably continue. You know, there was a new legislation that redistributed some of the sales tax last year, and we're getting about $16,000 a month out of that. It's not a lot of money, but a little bit. The, all of the revenues are, is that 52% about where it was last year? It's, yeah, coming in all right. The expenditures are at 18.9 this year as opposed to 25.4. They're going to be lower on most of these slides because we did not make the transfers yet. It was just a journal entry that we haven't done. So I think on most of the slides, that's a little bit misleading. We're going to transfer that money. With the general fund, as always, we'll transfer the sanitation members, a large transfer. We'll transfer as much of that as they need. We won't transfer it just wholesale, all of it over there.
Yeah, I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
I noticed on this, last year, our utility, utility franchise tax...
Yes, sir.
Comes in like almost a million ahead of what we budgeted.
That's true. It became a sales tax as opposed to a franchise tax, I think, two years ago. And it goes to the state and the state redistributes it. And, and we came out way ahead of what we had been receiving.
Are we going to change the budget?
Yes, sir. It's down a little bit in FY17 so far from what the actual was last year, but still ahead.
Is this to do with the sales tax on utility bills?
Mm-hmm. That's exactly what it is. It's collected that way now instead of what it was before. And this slide's a little bit different one I've showed you in the past. In the past, I've showed you the debt service payments, the current debt service payments for everything. This year, we made it just the projects because, in fact, we borrow for vehicles and equipment every year. And while, when you see the slide, it looks like the debt's going away, it's, it's really not. We're going to borrow some more next year and some more the next year. So this is, is one-time projects. And we're going to talk about the capital reserve and the four cents. You'll see a little bit better there what's falling off. But I thought it was more meaningful to look at this one-time type debt that we were going to actually stop paying the debt payments on. And to remind you about the capital reserve, the council established in 1998, four cents set aside for council initiatives. In FY18, one cent's going to be about 359,000, I think, and so the four cents will be 1.4 million. Right now, we have an uncommitted balance of 1.2 million dollars. There are a number of projects that are on the board to, to be completed. Northeast Creek Restrooms, Northeast Creek Boardwalk, there's some other recreation projects. We know you have Sturgeon City at your next meeting and the Jacksonville Marina.
But let me clarify those things. If the Sturgeon City building moves forward, as we will report to you at the next meeting on, on February the 7th, the funds that are available that you have directed will be sufficient to build that building. This is simply a note that says if, for whatever reason, the final bid comes in higher than our projections and higher than the available revenue, and you decide that you are going to assist, there's 1.2 million dollars that you could go into to assist. It's not a suggestion that you're going to provide more money to the project. Secondly, Jacksonville Marina. This does not, the 1.2 million does not need to be tapped for the money that you've already set aside, the 447,000, I believe it was, which was the matching grant for the money which we received from Part F. So again... So again, if the overall project comes in higher than the money we have, we either pair the project back to the money we have for the Marina, or you have the ability to tap some of this 1.2. Our goal is not to touch any of that money for either of those projects, because of the significant need in Northeast Creek, which Deanna will be sharing with us in a few minutes.
And this next slide just shows the projects that are financed with that four cents. The Jacksonville Landing will be paid for in this next budget, as will the original City Hall renovations. In FY18, there'll be $101,000 and $140,000 respectively in debt service payments. And that's about half of what it was in 17. So this is the last payment, it's about half the amount. So that one's fallen off. And then in 19, the Public Services and Fleet Complex will be paid off. And then on out into '22 and '27.
Now, this is a, this is an important planning slide for the council. This is the money where, where we build community assets. And what you're seeing is that the, the next budget, as we work together, the next budget has two payments left, one for Jacksonville Landing, one for City Hall. Two years away, that's going to be roughly a quarter of a million dollars that is freed up. Three years away, when you look at the fleet building, the fleet complex being finished, you will have freed up generally $450,000. So as we think together on the capital projects that you want to build for the community, whether it's splash pads, or whether it's more parks, or whether it's renovating, you know, quicker in Northeast Creek, this money is going to come available. What I will say to you as at your, as your manager, I want to stay away from debt. I want to pay for as much as we can with cash in the year that the money is available. That's obviously a programmatic and, and policy statement that y'all will have to look at. But as we look down the road, there are some good opportunities for us to expand the fiscal plan, the quality-of-life assets for this community.
Then we'll move on to the Water and Sewer Fund. Here is a, a history of their unrestricted fund balance. As you can see, it's coming down. We're paying cash for a lot of the maintenance projects and a lot of the, and, and it's going to have to continue this way over the next few years, because I think we're going to use up most of our borrowing capacity. When we finance the Parkwood Western Trunk Sewer, that's going to be a bond issue in the next six months, probably early next fiscal year. And I don't know that we're going to have capacity to borrow money, at least until the land app and water plant are paid off around 2023, I believe. So this is going to be our money-to-do repairs and, and regular maintenance. Again, this is FY16 budget compared to the actual. Revenues came in right where we expected, and user fees were just a little bit higher than what we expected. The expenditures came in less than what we expected. And here, they always come in a little less than budget, because of, if you'll remember, the water tanks that we have, we budget to pay for those every year, because the contract says if we cancel the contract, got to pay the whole amount. So there's always a, a million dollars that's out there to pay that bill, but doesn't get spent, so.
Clarification or a question? Did the general, did the legislature do away with impact fees for utilities? There was some discussion about it, did they end up, they did not?
Can I defer to my attorney on this matter?
Ron, 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 you. I mean, the most recent discussion on impact fees had to do with the lawsuit.
Yeah.
You know, that, that basically the court ruled.
It was a court ruling, not a legislature, wasn't it?
That's right. And we're, and we are, and part of it is because there's wording in water sewer authorities that allows them to include in their impact fee calculations, future expansions to the system. That same wording is not in the, in the statute for the cities and counties. And that's why the court ruled the way they did. And now what we hoped happened is we hoped that the legislature will standardize the legislation, you know, to allow it for cities and counties like they do for water and sewer authorities.
We have communicated this to our delegation.
Yes, but let me also address this. Our facility fees, the city attorney directed that we do an analysis. And from that analysis, we determined that we are in compliance, not non-compliance. We comply with the law. So our facility fees that we have been collecting are legal. Do you agree with that, sir?
Yes, sir. And there was actually a paragraph in the CAFRA that actually addressed that, because we had to do a letter to the, for the auditor to incorporate that. Because many cities clearly are not within that and are looking at large sums of money that they may be subject to lawsuits or having to pay back. But our legal position, until we're approved otherwise, is that we have met the law and, and we continue to stand by that. And we still, like Mr. Massey says, hope the legislature clarifies it for everybody going forward. But presently, we believe we comply with it.
Well, tell me why.
Because, and Wally is going to volunteer, because he's done the research.
I'd say the whole formula is hinged on future improvements.
And it does. And what, we've done an analysis of the projects that comprise our facility. We call them facilities charges. But the court basically said it doesn't matter what you call them.
Right.
And we do not have any projects in our facilities charges that are not currently, that already been constructed or are not currently underway. So we do not have future projects that are in our CIP that we're not funding.
Right. Let me, let me clarify that also.
Takes three lawyers to get you through that.
Two and a half, I'm not.
Same way as before.
The future project.
Only one has a license.
Exactly.
Let's just, let's describe what a future project is. Let's say that in 2018, we're going to rebuild the Henderson Pump Station. From one standpoint, you say that's in the future, that must be a future project. No, that's not a future project. That's a project where the pumps are wearing out, and you are replacing, even potentially expanding and improving that station. That's not a future project. That's a project that's going to be built in the future, but it's a project that's designed to continue quality service to the people who have been paying the fees.
It's not a project based on anticipating growth.
Correct. That is the real key that you just said, Mr. Bidner. I'll give you another example. Let's say that, that we're looking out in the future, and we say, well, that part of the community is going to grow, so we need to go ahead and do A, B, C, D. And all of that is about growth. That's where the Carthage case says you can't do.
Can't do.
But that's also why we need to work with the state legislature to change that wording. Because future growth should be playing for future growth. If we were to, if we were to build that future growth, who would pay for it? Current residents, currents, current user fees. That's not fair. That's the whole purpose of facility fees and impact fees, is to provide, some of which, future growth. So as the city attorney has so aptly stated to us as a staff, we have to make sure that every year, when Wally recalculates that fee, and you adopt it as your budget fee schedule, that we do not include those type projects until we get the state law changed. Now, Mr. Attorney, have I testified incorrectly?
Done a good job.
Okay. Wally, you want to correct anything there?
No, basically, everything that's in our fee are things that we are currently building or have built. We don't have anything that we are speculating that we need to collect money for, because we're going to start in 2018 or 2019. Everything we're, we are currently funding.
And even those areas where we have done the districts, like out of Piney Green in 17, that's a different concept, where you set aside a certain area, and those particular persons or, or organizations, as they develop, pay in for that kind of.
That's correct. But we've expended those funds already, so that is not future. We've already, for example, what we did with Onwasa, where we partnered to build the Springdale Lift Station, and we took that package plant offline. We built future capacity into that. We have a fee, but the city's already constructed that infrastructure. So all we're doing is reimbursing what we've already expended.
And that was the short answer.
But John's still not talking.
And you'll notice on this slide, they're about $600,000 last year, and it's down. Go to the next one.
What's that down from previous year?
Um, it's been going down. Our high years were in the millions.
Millions.
We, I think we looked at 10 years when we looked at the, the case.
And if you're going to look at that, Richard, I'd like to see what Onwasa's are.
What their facility fees are.
Historically, too.
Historically, we can.
Okay, and here, our user fees are right where you'd expect them to be, right at 50% at the end of December. The facility fees are a little, like we said, a little bit low. Other revenue is at 77%. We had some installment purchase that drove that up. We borrowed in December. And expenditures, we're at 26% of the budget, so we're pretty low there. I think we're going to end the, in the year, maybe not spending that 6.7 fund balance we said we would. And for Water Sewer, this is the same slide. It's just the projects. And here, you don't see the debt service declining. What has happened is, over the last two years, the debt service has been declining. It declined about $2.2 million. But we, we're setting that aside to go towards this new Parkwood project, so that we don't have to raise the rates. Don't quote me on that. We have not done any, any real calculations. But we hope that that's going to come real close to making a payment on those bonds. If we need a water sewer rate increase, it should be minimal.
And you didn't say, "Don't quote me on that."
I probably should have said, "Don't quote me on that." I don't think we're, we're far enough into the making of the Jell-O to. All right. And now we move on to the Stormwater Fund. Here's a history of the fund balance for that fund. It's been growing, but we do have, Deanna may talk about this, or, well, she will when she does the future CIP. There are two projects coming in the CIP, Center Street and Brenmar, that will use up some of this fund balance, I believe. Here is Stormwater's budget compared to actual for 2016. The revenue came in right as we expected. All other revenue was just a little bit more than what we expected, and the expenditures were a little less than what we expected. And again, they had some fuel savings and some salary and benefit savings, and some equipment purchase that they had some savings on. And for the Stormwater Fund, for '16 compared to '17, revenue, user fees are about where we would expect them. All over other revenue is also where we expect it to be. Expenditures are a little less than 50%, so we're on target with this. One thing here, y'all remember when we started this fund, the general fund advanced money to the Stormwater Fund to get started up. And the idea was that they would pay $75,000 a year till it was paid back. There's three more years on that payment to pay back the general fund, just so you know where that's at. So about another $225,000 to pay back to the general fund. There was a couple of years when the Stormwater Fund was really tight, that we didn't pay the general fund. They needed the money for operations, so we have reinstated that repayment.
One thing we may look at, and I want to stress the word "may," is increasing the payment in the coming year's budget. We will, we will talk to you about that. Instead of having three payments left, we may suggest that we round up. Instead of $75,000, maybe $100,000 or something, but we'll discuss that with, with you at budget time.
Okay. And on to the Solid Waste Fund. They finally have a positive unrestricted fund balance. As I mentioned before, we only transfer over exactly what they need. So they had been running in the negative, and now they're, they're a little bit positive. And they ended the year, June 30, 2016, with revenues just a little bit over budget. And the expenditures were less than budget. They also had significant fuel savings, like $164,000, which was more than half of their fuel budget. Diesel fuel was pretty cheap this year. And the Solid Waste Fund, for the six months, the charges for services are right where you would expect them to be. All other revenue is a little bit less. Again, we haven't made the transfer in, so that's why that one would be low. And our expenditures are about 9% less than where we would have expected them to be. And now we're going to move on to some forecasts and some budget planning assumptions that we're going to use. We're not anticipating any kind of property tax rate increase. I had preliminary discussions with the county tax office. We may have a small increase in the base and the value. So the revenue may actually be a little bit more, we're just, we won't increase the rate. Sales tax, I think it's going to be up just a little bit, based on what we've seen so far this year.
And that's just on the levy, not the rate, right?
Yes, sir.
I want to explain.
I'll make that clear.
The new buildings will add to the value, so we'll have.
What's the league's anticipating?
They don't come out with their estimates till like late March, early April, and we're usually well into the budget projection by then. Powerball funding seems to be remaining stable with the new formula from the state. Franchise tax, I think, like I mentioned, is going to be steadying out. We don't anticipate any increase in the Stormwater fee. Passports, we're going to continue to budget that at a conservative rate. I think we made $117,000 on that in FY16.
Well, that's more than we anticipated.
Yeah. They're doing really well. They stay busy. No increase in the solid waste fee, but of course, the general fund subsidy will continue for that. And for fuel, we're going to anticipate budgeting at the same level we did before. And as you can see here, the three-year average and the three-year maximum. Now, we adjusted that a little bit, because if you'll remember, a year ago, we were having to buy diesel fuel locally about once a month.
Short loads.
And paying a good bit more. And we took those out of that three-year average and three-year maximum, because we have now solved that problem. We have a 12,000-gallon diesel tank, so we're able to.
Is that located at the?
At the fleet, at the garage.
At fleet?
So even with the three-year maximums, our budget's going to be above what it's been at a high for the last three years. Unknowns are going to be health insurance. We just, everybody knows that's up in the air right now. The nonprofit contributions from the general fund, as I said, the water and sewer rates. We don't, we don't really know where we're going to end with that. And appropriation of the general fund balance.
On the nonprofits, you will recall that several years ago, when we had the change in sales tax distribution, we reduced that from a significantly higher number. We're assuming that in the coming year's budget, that you will keep that at 50,000. There will be a decision package that will, that's really based upon your session with your advisory committee several weeks ago, where they encouraged more support of, you know, community activities. So, you know, that will be a discussion. As we put together the base budget, though, we're assuming that your nonprofit contribution fund will remain at 50,000. You can decide if you want that higher.
How do we publicize that?
I'm going to ask. I'm gonna ask Lily Gray, who does that, to step forward and explain that to us.
How do we publicize that the $50,000 is available?
No. Who do we send out?
Please say.
Information as to, we're accepting applications for, for funding.
We sent out flyers, and we sent out emails and blasts to all nonprofits in our network.
To all nonprofits, okay.
Yes, those that have applied and those who have not applied and have not received funding. It's open to any nonprofit that's provided services.
Even if they didn't receive anything last year, they?
They can reapply.
They can reapply, okay. Thank you. Answered my question.
Certain criteria, though, right?
Well, yes. There is an application process and criteria that they have to meet, and we score those applications.
Just a minute.
But it's, it's available to them to apply.
Thank you.
Okay, and a little more on the health.
Listen, alumni fund isn't in there, is it?
No, sir. That is clearly in the black this year.
Here we have the health insurance fund history. We had a pretty good year in FY12, and again, in 14, but all the other years have been not so good. We have not seen what the full impact is gonna be of the changes we made last year. We made several changes to try to reduce this last year and even increase the premium, so we hope that that's gonna help stop that bleeding. We did meet with the broker, and he said that the inflation rate for healthcare costs is anticipated to be 8%.
Is what?
Eight.
Eight percent?
That usually ends up being high. This early in the game, they shoot high. But I don't, and with the change in administration, who knows what's gonna happen with the healthcare. This AHCA payment, there were two pieces of this payment. One was about $20,000, and then this one was $2,000. The $20,000 payment, we made the last one this year, last scheduled payment. So next year, we anticipate just a $2,000 payment into this program.
And you know, one, if you'll recall, one time historically, we had to make total payments that came to like $63,000 or something.
I think so, yeah.
So that program has worked its way down. So, one thing on, on healthcare, the, we committed to the employees that as we got into this year, we would try to find ways that could continue to reduce the cost of just the basic flu. And we're pleased to tell you that we have signed up a program that is basically a phone-a-doc program. It's technically called the Healthy Issue. Ms. Williams, would you come up a moment? Okay. And let me tell you how that, that program works. It, it works well. Now, let me explain it to you. Every city employee who is on the healthcare program, so for example, those who are military, ex-military, they're not on the program. But we pay $5.80 a month for every employee. If nobody calls, we pay $5.80. But if you, for example, wake up, and I'll give you a personal testimony, as my wife did two weekends ago, instead of going to the urgent care facility, she picked up the phone and called the Healthy Issue. Within two minutes, she got a call back from a medical doctor licensed to practice in North Carolina. He reviewed her medical history that she had already filled out. And within five minutes, she had a prescription on the way to a local pharmacy. The cost to the city was $5.80. The cost to us as members of the city's health fund was zero. Now, if we had gone to the urgent care, the copay to us would have been $35. The charge to our health insurance program would have been whatever. Pick a number. 35, 65, 105, pick any number you want. The point I'm making is, this new program that we have identified, and we're now going out publicizing to the city employees, if we can keep employees out of the emergency room and keep them out of the urgent care for things such as the flu, we can have a substantial reduction in our expenses. There is no limit as to the number of times a month or a year that an employee can call. They will tell you, they, meaning the, the doctor at the other end. He said to us, "If you're not well in three days, then I suggest you do go to your local physician." So, again, this program is not for every illness. You have kidney stones, don't call. Okay? If you have the flu, things that we're all experiencing, this is a program we've identified. And I can tell you, the number of employees who are already signing up and using it, the reports are coming back very, very favorable.
I think the good news is that the information, the employees, we've been, we've gone around and done education sessions, and so the employees are encouraged to, to sign up, and they can put in all their medical information. This information is through Blue Cross Blue Shield as well. It's shared, so that when the, the doctor, and it's always a doctor, calls you back, they have all your medical information. They already know what prescriptions you're on. And what we're finding is the turnaround time literally is less than 20 minutes. And it keeps you out of that waiting room in the physician's office where you're waiting sometimes hours. And I think what's important is, we noticed last year, our emergency room visits had gone up. And we couldn't understand it, because we'd done everything to bring it down. And one of the things we found out is many of our employees who, who may not have $35 in their pocket, instead of going to the doctor and paying a copay, go to the emergency room, although it costs a lot more, they can set up payments over a period of time if they don't have $35 in their pocket. We hadn't really thought about that, and that has been happening. So this actually takes care of that as well, because there's absolutely no cost to the employee or their dependents that are on the plan.
So, is this separate from our Blue Cross administers?
It was suggested through our Blue Cross Blue Shield folks, and as you know, we have the new wellness program, and it was suggested that we look at the program. And we went through some analysis. We actually did some focus groups with people that have children and have, you know, health concerns and issues. And would they use this program? We talked to spouses. We did our work in, in advance, and we thought, "Let's try it for a year and see how it works." And it's interesting, because I think we've done a good job with the education sessions. I'm actually surprised at the level of participation right now. So, I think a lot of it might have to do with the big wave of flu that went through recently. It's been very helpful. Let's hope it drives down some of those ER costs and some of those, those things that are hitting the fund. But it's interesting, because now, think about it, there's no cost to the fund at all for that. There's no reimbursement.
Diverts the cost from Blue Cross Blue Shield account, at least for part of the treatment.
Is that who's carrying our catastrophic insurance, Blue Cross?
They actually, the answer there is no. Blue Cross, in turn, they administer it, but we have the catastrophic coverage with a carrier, so it's all packaged together. We can get you the details of the catastrophic carrier.
Talk about stop-loss?
Yeah.
It's basically reinsurance.
I just wondered who the company was. I, I don't need to particularize. I just, Mr. Lazar and I sat through about an hour and a half presentation of health insurance, so we're still a little leery-eyed from all the alternatives for Onwassa.
Well, and I know Gail had put up the 8%. That's just for inflation. So as long as we maintain our health fund balance as it is, and we watch, you know, some of those expenditures, it seems that's what we'll experience, but we'll have to wait and see.
I think it's what we were told, to say, "Health insurance is expecting 7% increase, too," I believe. Is that by Brian?
Please.
Is that it, Kirby?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. We're almost done. We're gonna talk about some future issues and opportunities here. I mention this every year, just to keep it on your radar. That 800 megahertz system that we financed with the county, that was interest-only payments for the first five years. So in FY19, we'll make a small principal payment of like $28,000, but then after that, it goes up to $642,000 in principal for three years. And then there's a $300,000 the last year. So, to be on your radar, it won't be in the 18 budget, but then in 19.
Is the, is the intelligent system, how do we handle the ITS, about that issue?
We still have two more payments, and they're gonna be basically paid in power bill funds.
Okay, okay.
Paid one initial payment, a larger payment, a combination of some power bill money and some general fund money that was in the transit budget that hadn't been spent, and, and now we're two payments from the power bill.
I think that's $540,000. Which is the next two years. We're also coming up on FY19, will be revaluation year again. And then, a big question is federal funding for infrastructure. We've heard tons about what the new president might do, so we'll be keeping an eye on that.
And let's spend a minute on that. We believe from, you know, what, what is being said, shovel-ready projects are what they're gonna be looking for. Shovel-ready projects mean shovel-ready. You gotta have everything ready to go. So we are putting together water and sewer projects, some transit projects, other things, so that if the opportunity opens, that we're gonna be able to file those so that we can take advantage of that. So just letting you know that we are, we are watching the federal funding discussion regarding infrastructure improvements, and we're going to try to be ready to get what we can for the city.
And we're also gonna be open to any other partnership opportunities that come along. And we're still seeing continued reduction in the CDBG funds.
Lily, you, I believe you said that the latest letter is $343,000?
That is our current year budget. We have not received the new numbers for FY18 yet. We usually get that around March, early April, right around time to start working.
But that's come, since you've been with us, the first year you came back, which is, what, eight years ago?
Yes, 2008.
What was the money at that time?
We were, we were at $640,000 at that time. We were down to $343, so significant cuts.
And as for our revenue forecast, we talked about this a little bit. I think that we're gonna see just a tiny increase in the property tax. Revenue, not the rate, the revenue. And sales tax, I actually, that 17 number is the budget. I expect that to be a little bit higher than 18, to be about where we end up, 17. And then Dr. Woodruff's gonna talk about compensation options.
This is a profile that shows you what you have done over the last several years. You will notice that in 2017, there was an across-the-board $1,000 increase. You can also see that in other years, there have been some percentages, one-time allotments, and so forth. What I found interesting was, when you take the $1,000 increase, what did that actually mean to your workforce? If you'll notice, the left-hand column shows the increase, the middle, the second column shows you the number of employees. So for example, $1,000 to three employees actually meant between a 4.5 and 5% increase. If you notice, a $1,000 increase to 71 employees meant a 1.5 to 2% increase. The interesting thing is that if you look from 2.5% and above, you will find there were over 300 employees who received at least a 2.5% increase. One of the issues that we always have in the budget is, what do you want to do for your employee? We're not asking you to make a position tonight. We can address it at the end of the budget, which you have done from time to time. We can put a specific percent in the base budget, which we have not traditionally done. We can place a CIP, not a CIP, a CPI, Consumer Price Index quota in there. Right now, your Consumer Price Index appears to show roughly 2% inflation for this past year, or we can do other. At some point, we will be asking y'all to give us direction on that. Budget schedule, staff has been working on the budget. We have the introduction this evening. The CIP, not to be confused with the other CPI, the capital improvement draft is gonna be out in February, early March. Budget workshops in April, May, and June as needed. Budget public hearing, May 16th, and of course, adoption has to be no later than June 30th. We would anticipate, though, that again this year, that by mid-May, we'll have the process to the point where you can possibly adopt the budget if you're comfortable. With that, we'd like to give you a very quick update relative to the capital improvement program for this year. Deanna Trubal is going to come up and give you that. Deanna, please. Now, we promised Mr. Thomas that we would try to be through by 6:30 tonight, since he has a family birthday. And it's not his, contrary to the rumor, he is not turning 23 tonight.
He looks 23.
Good evening. So just a quick reminder for the FY17 CIP projects. We were working on 24 projects. One of them is community programs, 16 in public services, five in recreation and parks, and two in transportation. As we all know, we'll be talking about the Surgeon City Environmental Education Building next meeting. So in October 16, we reviewed some of the options or challenges. In November of 16, we held a charrette with the design team. And this next coming meeting, we're hoping to update city council, TDA, and the Surgeon City nonprofit on what the, what the result of that charrette. So for public services, we're not gonna hit all of these projects, so if I don't talk about one and you would like some more information, feel free to ask. In this particular, for FY17 and 18, inflow and infiltration, this is one where we go out one year and do a design, followed by one year of construction. For this particular project, we've actually identified, we're focusing our, our efforts on the Henderson Sewer, Sewer Basin, specifically along Mill Creek. We've identified some options where we're, we're dividing this project up into three phases. The first phase is where we've actually gonna do a clearing along this, this section. The second phase will be raising manholes, and which would give us the opportunity to actually see the condition of the lines. And then the third is where we actually go in and correct those deficiencies. The Henderson Drive infrastructure project, that's where we're looking at the existing water and sewer lines along Henderson. We're evaluating them. We're going to, again, camera the lines, see where the deficiencies are, make those repairs. And all of this is in anticipation of DOT repaving Henderson Drive. We're looking primarily from Henderson Drive pump station to around the mid-block crossing for Jacksonville High School. That's the segment that we're looking at.
Now, you, you touched on one that a lot of people are interested in. The DOT has said they want to get Henderson Drive completely resurfaced. But they've also told us, we have to have our water and sewer infrastructure replaced in that area. So what is your projection of when the public would actually see construction on our water and sewer improvements? And then do you or Anthony have a projection on when we might see paving out there?
Well, we are finishing up the, we're waiting for a technical memorandum that gives us specific recommendations on how to move forward. The design's probably gonna take us about six months with permitting, et cetera. And then construction, it is a very long segment that we're identifying, probably gonna have to be doing night work. So construction's probably gonna last maybe 10 months or so. And then after we're done with construction, DOT is gonna want the infrastructure to sit a while, just in the case there's any settling that might happen before they come in and actually pave. So part of our project that we'll be doing is, as we open the trenches along Henderson to make those repairs, we will be repaving it, and then, then DOT will come back and mill everything up and pave it again.
Where are you starting and where are you finishing?
We're starting along near the Henderson Drive pump station, and we're going to about the midway block crossing at Jacksonville High School.
The sewer line was replaced between 17 and the pump station years ago, wasn't it?
Yes, and we have done some, we did some lining work in, in some of those segments as well. So it's not the entire section that's gonna be replaced, but there are, we have identified some areas that, that do need to be replaced.
Are we gonna be reminded of Hargett Street during this process?
Yes.
Yes. Glad you said it.
Hopefully not with.
Don't get that bad.
Hopefully not with the patching job. I think that was the greatest concern. So, given your schedule, it sounds like probably the, in October or so of 17, we're gonna start digging trenches, roughly 10 months, so we might as well say. we're going to start digging trenches roughly ten months, so we might as well say October of eighteen. So Anthony, what's your projection on paving?
I talked to Robert yesterday about this, meaning Robert Voss. He's down at the division office now. He's over maintenance of all of Division Three. And they've got money set aside for Henderson Drive whenever we're doing. But like Deanna mentioned, they're not going to start resurfacing until at least six months after we're done with our project.
So we're probably talking spring of two thousand and nineteen?
Ideally, ideally, yeah. If everything goes as planned, that's what the schedule would be. But of course, the challenge is, you know, how are we going to construct all that infrastructure in that area? Typically, we would do night work along that road with the subsurface infrastructure and then also with the resurfacing. However, there are a lot of residents along that road at the same time. And there are also not a whole lot of alternate routes. So there's a lot of planning that really needs to be done, not only on what we're going to do, but also how we do it.
What about Onslow and the old section of Henderson, between seventeen and the Onslow?
The section of, the section of Onslow Drive between, well, it actually goes onto Henderson. So from the south side of the, of the bridge there, all the way back to Marine Boulevard, that's going to be done later this year. That's already in DOT's contract. But the section of Henderson.
From where to where for the bridge?
So it's from the bridge where it's Henderson at that point. Back towards Onslow Drive all the way to Marine Boulevard. That'll be done later this year. And of course, the section of Onslow Drive, south of Marine, was done last year. So this is just a continuation of that work. But the section of Henderson Drive between Onslow and Marine, if I'm not mistaken, that's, is that our street?
Yeah, we're actually going to talk about that in a few minutes.
That would be up to us and whatever our schedule is to resurface with power bill funds.
You're welcome to stay right there. Get some questions coming up, please.
Moving along, the US seventeen North Drummer Callum Water Sewer Extension. I showed that as yellow, meaning that it's delayed a little bit. And really, the design's been complete. We completed it in anticipation of a planned commercial development. The commercial development project has stalled a little bit. And as such, we've just moved this project forward into FY eighteen. So we're just waiting until the demand's there for us to continue moving forward. The Marine Boulevard Water Line, that actually was a project we started this year. Through some subsurface investigation, we realized that there was a large number of underground utility conflicts. So we decided to push this project until next year to allow us a little bit more time to do some preliminary design and alternatives to figure out how to replace this section of water line.
We originally were going to do a directional bore under Cheney Creek. And we found out everybody else in the world is already underwater there. So we're going back, literally, and we're going back to look at an aerial crossing. It's going to be tricky. Problem is, aerial crossings have to be supported. And with all the stuff underground, if you start driving pilings to support the aerial, it became complicated.
The US North, North Water and Sewer Extensions, we're currently under a master plan that we're expected to be completed by the end of January. And this planning report will identify the various sizes for lines, where, location for pump stations, if we need any elevated tanks. And this will form the backbone of the infrastructure in this area. So this project is, again, the demand is not there in expecting the master plan. We've moved this project really to start design tentatively for next year. And this will be something that, once the master plan comes in, we'll be updating council at a future workshop. And likewise, the Southwest Blue Creek School Road Water Improvement Project, that project initially consisted of extending a water line in the vicinity of the DOT office on Wilmington Highway down towards Blue Creek School Road. We realized, once we got in there, that this project, actually, the scope needed to be expanded to include some water, low water pressure at Yop Road, as well as in the Georgetown area. So we've actually expanded this water modeling to pick all that up. And so that master plan or that report won't be completed until closer towards the end of the fiscal year. So as we get some more information, we'll update council on that project as well.
Now, go back one for just a second, please. The top project, you know, the seventeen project and the Blue Creek, those are projects that will help the city grow through annexation. So as we look at, at the growth of the tax base, growth of the water and sewer system is going to be essential in those areas.
The Black Creek Raw Water Supply Wells, that project is shown as yellow. And that's in part because we've constructed the Cretaceous monitoring wells at Burton Park. And through that project, we're trying to see if we can forego that third reduction in the Black Creek aquifer. So we've got a year of monitoring, and we'll have a report that's due here very soon. Again, we'll update council with more information on our next steps on that particular project. The Indian Drive Booster Station is a project that's currently under design. We're nearing completion of design, and that project will, it's a complete renovation of that station. Will new VFD pumps, electrical, some site work, looking at updating the building itself as well.
And VFD stands for?
Variable Frequency. Yep. The FY seventeen sidewalk project, that's actually a sidewalk connection that takes the Lejeune Trail termini right in front of Hargett Street and takes it down to connect to Newbridge Street. And that project is, we're so close to finishing design, we'll hopefully be bidding that project out in the next month. And that'll be a great next piece to connect downtown to the existing trail. The FY seventeen street rehabilitation project, this project, we get our list from, from streets, and we identify, and we go out and walk the streets. We look at the segments that they've rated. Do we agree with them? Do we need to expand it? And so as such, the list that we got actually exceeded the available budget. The available budget that we had for this year and next year is the same. It's eight hundred and thirty thousand. So consequently, we split this project into two phases. So the first phase is going to be bid out probably within the next month or sooner. We're going to be focusing on these segments of streets. Now, if in years past, last year, we had a lot, we had more segments, but they were shorter. These were actually looking at much longer lengths of these streets. So the number, the quantity of streets that we're doing is lower. So I guess probably the most important one, just because of who it's going to influence, is the Northwoods Drive. We're focusing right in front of Parkwood Elementary. So we'll be coordinating with the school not to interrupt or to minimize interruption with them while school's in session. And then the next phase.
Oh, Boulevard, is that better shape?
Yes. We're actually looking at repaving from Old Twenty-four all the way to White Street. So Phase Two, it's already been designed. It's ready to be bid out, but we don't have the money based on projections. So what we're going to do is, we are going to bid this project towards the end of this fiscal year and award the contract using FY eighteen money. So we're trying to get ahead of the list of projects that we have so we can continue paving at the rate that we've identified in years past.
Now, Onslow Drive is not the same segment that Anthony spoke of a while ago. When you cross Marine Boulevard and head towards Hargett, there is a point where the DOT's road ends and the city's road begins. So this is over in the New River Housing Area.
South of New River Drive.
Yes. Then moving on to Recreation, we are, we're about thirty days out from finishing the Lejeune Trail and Greenway Project. Yes, it's a great, great addition to our trail connectivity. The amphitheater, as you know, we've had some delays with, with Phase One, with the construction of the Stormwater Pond and the site work due to the wet conditions. But we're trying to make some ground up for Phase Two. Phase Two consists of laying out some conceptual walkways, electrical service, the concrete pad for the performances, et cetera. So we're working on a concept plan, get the stakeholders to buy in and make sure they're in agreement, and then we can move towards construction. And so we're hoping to do all that within the next several months.
And you'll be having a workshop that will show you the proposed improvements of the amphitheater. But I will tell you, it's been a long time since I've seen a project that was impacted just constantly in the way that that amphitheater has been impacted by the rain. Every time it almost gets dry enough for us to do any of our work that Parks is doing out there, we get three more days of rain.
Okay, we're going to talk about some conceptual plans that we're working on. So what you see is the Welcome Center. The Welcome Center is two concepts. One's an open-air concept and one is a closed facility or closed building.
Now, this is at Jacksonville Landing. You'll remember that when Jacksonville Landing was built, closer to the water, there's the restroom area. But closer to the filling station, up at the upper end, there was a pad left for the development of a Welcome Center. And I would like to take a moment to recognize Lorette Ligon, who's here. We'll be meeting with the chamber to discuss how partnerships might work. Lorette, thank you very much for joining us tonight, please.
So this is the front elevation, and this is actually facing Newbridge Street. Again, you've got the open.
Hole Bridge.
Hole Bridge, sorry. The floor plan is forty-five by thirty-seven. That's going to be shown on both concepts. And so here's the rear, and this faces Highway seventeen and the Marina Cafe. And again, here's what the floor plan would look like. The bottom, left and right, I've identified the corner walls just to kind of give you some frame of what we're looking at. Everything else would be open, and you've got the men's room, a women's room, and a storage area.
Yeah, the open-air concept is that anyone could come any time of the day, and you would have a kiosk there where you could either touch a screen or however. But the purpose would be for them to gain information, and then that would give them directions to the community. So the open-air concept would be, again, open twenty-four hours a day, because remember, that park is open twenty-four hours a day. Second option is to have an enclosed, so please.
Oh, okay. So the enclosed building, again, it's the exact same floor plan, square footage, except for now, we have it closed, where we've got the main door, and then this is the rear. And what's different about this building, because this building will be closed during the day, but the restrooms would remain open. So in this concept, you've got entrances, two entrances for both, the both restrooms. Again, the same concept, where you have the touchscreens, maybe have an area where someone's sitting, welcoming somebody. But again, both floor plans are forty-five by thirty-seven. The infrastructure has already been extended to serve this pad through the development of the Jacksonville Landing. And so more information to come when we present it to the various stakeholders.
And remember, this money is, again, it's already budgeted. And the TDA was kind at probably two months ago to add an additional forty thousand dollars. We'll be reviewing some plans with the TDA. I believe they have a meeting Thursday. And we'll be, we'll be discussing this further. At a point in time, we'll be asking the TDA, possibly Thursday, possibly later, and the City Council to give us direction. Do you want to do Concept A? You want to do Concept B? The exterior theme, though, is based upon the theme that we've used for the restrooms in the area. So, you know, this is what the building would look like. It's also as big as the building can get. I mean, you, we already have a, a development site, parameters set by the sidewalks and the parking and so forth that was previously installed. So once again, one concept is an open-air concept that would not require staffing. The other is a closed concept that would have to have staffing through whatever sources. And that's why we'll be discussing with the chamber, possible partnerships, and so forth for the Welcome Center. And again, all of those interior concepts, like the bathrooms and so forth, those are still to be finalized, so.
Moving along, this is another concept plan. This is Northeast Creek Park. If you look at the park, we're focusing on the playground side. Corvin Street kind of splits this park into two. So one of the things that we've identified in the CIP is this project. And before, we went in and initially identified maybe just a new bathroom and shelter combination. And so we took a step back and said, let's, let's start looking at it from a master plan standpoint. So the, to walk through some other features, the purple circle is the identification of a new playground. The large, the orange boxes are new shelters. We're proposing one large one and two smaller ones. We've got a new restroom. We've identified a potential splash pad. The blue box is Ninja Ropes Course. The gray, or excuse me, the brown box is the existing restroom shelter, where we're actually going to go in and try to rehab that existing structure. We're going to put in some future parking, redo some of the parking, some landscaping, and to beautify this. And so we'll be taking not only this concept, but some other projects that we've identified for Northeast Creek and talk about in more detail during, we tentatively identified as the March fifth meeting, where we're going to actually hopefully lay out the proposed CIP. So we'll be talking about some of these projects in more detail.
We will at that time. One of our concepts is to actually take y'all out and have you walk through Northeast Creek. That is an area that I hope you will agree that over the next three to four years, we should significantly invest. It's a heavily utilized facility. It has a lot of age on it, and we need to, to give some attention to it.
Are we, are we looking at increasing our accessibility for our playgrounds?
Yes, and not, as a separate project, Recreation did apply for the all-inclusive playground. And so if we are successful in getting that grant, that will be where this playground is.
And one of the things, because of the topography in this area, there will, there will be significant improvements to the walkways and paths to make them much more accessible to the playground equipment.
So work has started on this project already. We've hired Park and Associates to develop a master plan, a stormwater master plan for all eighty acres. And so they're currently underway, performing some surveying work, et cetera.
Eighty acres are both sides of the road.
Yes, sir, yes, both sides, thank you. And then moving on to transportation, we've got the Commons Park and Ride and the Rails to Trails. The Rails to Trails Greenway Extension, we've shown that as yellow. We just have, quite honestly, haven't had time to work on it. So that's a project that we've, we identified earlier that we were just going to move to next fiscal year and continue working on that. But on the Commons Park and Ride, we have a conceptual drawing, and it shows the area that has been previously identified over at the Commons Recreation Center. This would allow access for buses to drop off participants, that anyone who wants to park. It's easy access. It helps for overflow parking, for recreation of parks, and off-peak hours for transportation. So we currently finished doing an environmental assessment that we have submitted to FTA. We're hoping that FTA will give us approval here in the next couple of weeks, at which time we can proceed forward with the design. So I know Transportation will be giving an update in more detail, not only on this project, but some other transportation projects. I think it's next month.
One of the things you'll notice, Lake Bidner is there on the left side of the screen. One of the difficulties we have right now with the parking that is there is it only has one way in and one way out. And when you have major events that use either the roadway system or even the Commons buildings themselves, it creates some real difficulties. That's why in designing this, we've created more of a road system that you can see will give a varying way so the participant can be using part of it, vehicles can be using other parts. This is a project that is significantly funded by the transit system.
And again, this is just conceptual. We haven't started design or anything, so I'm sure some of the features are, will change as we go through that process. And so that concludes kind of where we're at with our current CIP. And again, out of the twenty-four projects, we have nine in planning, ten in design, and five that are in active construction.
Now, Anthony, we also have the State Transportation Improvement Plan. Did you and Mr. Lozara want to spend a minute on this?
I'll ask Anthony to touch on it, but I wanted Anthony to provide everyone a little recap, sort of a summary of the projects that were funded on the STIP, and also some of the projects that no longer are funded on the STIP. And it's fairly lengthy and detailed, and you can go through it. And if you have any questions, you can email us, and we'll get you some answers. Anthony, anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Lozara. Mayor and council, as you know, when we reach certain milestones with MPO operations, we like to provide an update. As Deanna mentioned earlier, I will be back here in probably late February to provide an MPO and transportation overview in general. But since we did reach this milestone where the state just issued the new draft, TIP, we wanted to get it in front of you as soon as possible so that you can start to digest some of the results. Overall, at least in my opinion, the results are mixed. We have a lot.
We have a lot of projects on the TIP that are funded.
Don't lie.
I'm going to temper my opinions a little bit, try to be tactful. But the first section there is basically just a very brief summary of some of the more significant projects that you may be interested in. And then the second section there is a summary of some of the projects that unfortunately came off of the TIP. During the last cycle, they were funded. And then unfortunately, because of how that process works every two years, some of those high-value projects did not survive the cut.
And we've got several projects that we're very concerned about that we're going to continue to work on, the Henderson Drive.
Is that extension, Henderson Drive extension?
Yeah, extension.
Widening, is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
The existing extension.
Yes.
Yes, sir, that came off of the list, unfortunately.
And that was a high priority.
And I know we've talked about that several times. That project right there is one that we're strongly advocating to go back on the list. And all indications are that with some of the surplus revenue that the state is realizing that they may infuse some more money into the TIP. So if they do that, we're hoping to advocate our cause for that project and hopefully get it funded. It's already 25% designed. I mean, Mr. Thomas, you've seen the designs. Most of the right-of-way is already there, and it's just a very common sense project. So hopefully, you know, working with TAC members, Mr. Lozara, Mr. Warden, our local delegation at the General Assembly, hopefully we can get that project put back on the list.
So is this common, uncommon? I mean, I thought, once you told me it was funded.
That's what I heard.
I mean, that's, once they say it's funded, that's just...
Well, it goes and just take us...
There are two sections of the TIP. If you look at the attachment, I'll show you what actually, how the mechanics actually work. So you see that the TIP shows 2018 through 2022 as the improvement program, and then 2023 through 2027 as the developmental program. So it's broken down into two five-year increments. It's a 10-year program. Everything included in the improvement program, the first five years, is secure, meaning that the project is moving forward, it's guaranteed funding, okay? If it's identified in the developmental program, it is subject to reprioritization. And unfortunately, the projects on the list that you see here, the NC-111 extension, the Gum Branch Road widening, that's the four-lane project, and then the Henderson Drive widening, for a variety of reasons, they were identified in the developmental program, which unfortunately they fell off during reprioritization.
What we're trying to do is get the, I'll just call them rules, to recognize a seven-year period, not a five-year period. You cannot take a project from concept to development in transportation in a five-year period.
Right.
So, you know, we've talked to Representative Shepherd, we've talked to Representative Cleveland, and to Senator Brown. We've talked to, obviously, the NPO. We've talked to the various people at the state level. You know, there's a lot of momentum. That doesn't mean it's going to get changed, though.
We're talking to everyone who's willing to listen. And just to follow up on a comment of how long a project takes, on average, it's about seven years. So if you think about it, to realistically deliver a project, you have to schedule it. You know, if it's not already underway, you already have to put it in the developmental program, which puts it at a disadvantage for being reprioritized and potentially falling off. Even though they're no longer funded, quote unquote, we are continuing the design and the environmental permitting process on all of those projects, so that if in fact there's some infrastructure investment or whatever the case may be, we can pick it off the shelf and hopefully put it on the ground.
Thank you. I think it is also appropriate for us to take a moment to thank Ms. Fountain. She has served very well as our transportation member from this area. We do not know whether she'll be reappointed. Obviously, she was a Republican governor appointee. We do know, we now have a Democratic governor. Do we have any indication on when he will make the transportation appointments?
It's hard to say, sir.
Okay. But we do thank her for definitely helping us on many projects while she served, so...
The bad thing is Wilmington's up in the rotation for this next time. So if, as we expect, the governor makes his unappointment, it more than likely will come from Wilmington this next time.
Well, the way it's worked historically is that there's been one representative from the Jacksonville area and one representative from the Wilmington area. Now, currently, the aviation and seaport representative is from Wilmington. So that may kind of balance the table a little bit for even the playing field. But who's to say?
Mayor, I have two announcements. Do you have any other conversational workshop items before those announcements?
Go ahead.
Okay. We would like to remind the public that this is the week of our FEMA public meetings. Tomorrow at the county courthouse, I'm sorry, the county administration building out of Burton Park, Ryan, I believe that starts at 2:00 p.m.
That's correct.
Would you come up and talk to us a minute about those meetings and the one here on Thursday?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Warden. Getting the mayor, council, general public, the city of Jackson will be participating. And the county held meetings tomorrow from 2:00 to 4:00 that's at the governments that are in Burton Park. The county is also hosting a session from 6:00 to 8:00 tomorrow night for the Sneed's Ferry community. And then the city of Jackson is going to host a session from 4:00 to 6:00 on Thursday here at City Hall. And representatives from the state, the consultants that helped with the new modeling for the new flood maps, will be on hand to present, you know, basically what went into that, answer questions that citizens may have. Staff will be here, will have computers set up. So tomorrow and on Thursday, so we can look at individual properties and say, hey, here's what your current situation is, what the preliminary maps currently identify. And then we will also, we've invited representatives from insurance companies and land surveyors to be on hand in case some citizens find out that their property may be severely impacted or impacted in general. They can go to the surveyors to find out information on getting an elevation certificate that may help them lower the insurance premiums if they're going to be required to obtain flood insurance. And we will have insurance companies on hand to also provide information, and also provide information so that, you know, they have somebody they can reach out to if they find themselves having to pick up that insurance.
And we will be broadcasting, we will be taping that City Hall workshop or presentation, and it will be replayed a number of times so that the citizens in the viewing area can have that information.
When will those maps be finalized?
We have yet to been, we have not been notified that our 90-day period to appeal has begun just yet. We intend to file an appeal based on newer LiDAR imagery or data, and also bathometric data, some updated bathometric data. We've been in contact with the U.S. Corps of Engineers. They're actually in the process of surveying the river channel, which is 90-foot width from basically the, just east of the 172 Bridge, all the way to the Jacksonville area, the federal channel. Hasn't been done over 30 years. So we'll look to use that information, provide that to the state based on the meeting that we held in Raleigh, or we had with them in Raleigh a few months back, so that they can look at, you know, possibly looking at running that model again based on newer data and updated data.
And I would like to commend Ryan. He is the one who thought about contacting the Corps and asking for them to update the bathometric for that channel, and well done. I would also mention that when it comes to the FEMA program, again, this is an open house. There'll be a formal presentation. We'd encourage you to be here at 4:00 on Thursday or at the county admin building at 2:00 tomorrow, Wednesday. The other thing I would like to mention is, probably two hours from now, your chief of public safety, Mike Inara, will be sworn in by the North Carolina Chief of Police Association as its incoming president. I know you're proud of that. The mayor has sent him a letter of congratulations. That'll be read as part of the program this evening. So again, we're very proud of the leadership group of the city as they continue to take important positions around the state. Staff, think of any other items to update? Counsel, anything?
I'm going to pay a motion to the general.
Hello?
All right.
Sing happy birthday to your son, please.